Is that my, that's my light?
Sorry, sorry.
Ah chill bro.
Chill?
Yeah. I'm like a, I'm like a posthumous. She sends me these events to represent drill.
Oh shit.
Nah, I don't know, she just rang it last night. I told you my, I saw that all that one on the radio. Seriously, yeah, I was like, oh, just, uh, just while we're here, just like the message, go for stuff. I get it signed, he's like, yeah, no worries. It says, is it glossy, the forster? So it's got some goldy silver pens where he takes everywhere and gets them signed with a badge.
It's joking.
No, but he said it was glossy, he's, uh, we'll have to do something.
I have got a pen, normal mark, uh, with it. I don't, I don't believe it.
I prom- I promise you.
I don't believe it.
I swear, I won't be great.
Sorry.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome, colleagues, to this special meeting of council. For those in the public gallery, I should explain that this is a ceremonial meeting solely for, for the purpose of awarding the freedom of the city to a very famous son of Newcastle. And I trust you will respect the formality of the occasion. The normal meeting for which you are here will follow shortly. So it's my great privilege to be able to wel- welcome Professor Peter Higgs to council tonight. And I look forward to presenting Peter with his award. This is something we had planned to do last autumn, but unfortunately, it was not possible then. However, that may have been to our advantage, as Professor Higgs has since been awarded the Nobel Prize. So here we are in the presence of an even greater being. May I also formally welcome some of our city scientists of the future, who earlier met and talked with Professor Higgs. Ryan Williams and Mariana Neves from Newcastle Sixth Form College, and Catherine White and Katie Forsyth from Sacred Heart High School. They are all studying philic- physics, and in the future, council may be here again to honour them when they also become eminent scientists making amazing discoveries. I now invite councillor Nick Forbes, leader of council, to speak on council's decision to make this award. Councillor Forbes?
Lord Mayor, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen. It is fitting that we begin tonight's meeting by conferring the highest honour that this city could bestow on a man whose work has helped change the way that we see the universe. Professor Peter Higgs receives the honorary freedom of Newcastle in recognition of his work in the field of particle physics. We only give honorary freedom of the city to people who make a difference to both Newcastle and to the world. And Professor Higgs' name will be honoured alongside others that make a difference to Newcastle and the world, including former US President Jimmy Carter, Bob Geldof, and the late Nelson Mandela. Peter Higgs was born not far from here, in Elswick, in nineteen twenty-nine. He predicted in nineteen sixty-four the existence of a new particle, one that gave fundamental particles their mass. It became known as the Higgs boson. Put simply, the particle explains how our universe became the way it is today. It helps to explain what happened in those milliseconds after the Big Bang to create everything that we see around us. And Professor Higgs' prediction was so important that experts from around the world spent the next five decades trying to see the particle. It was a search that ended just two years ago, the Large Hadron Collider in Geneva, when two teams of scientists finally lived what some people in the media have dubbed the elusive god particle, although I know that that's a description that Professor Higgs himself does not particularly favour. The scientific journey of discovery started by Professor Higgs back in nineteen sixty-four. It's leading to a step change in the way we understand the universe and the technologies we can use to explore it. It's probably too early to guess at some of the practical outcomes, but most scientists rank its discovery with that of the electron, which led to everything from moon landing to the moon landing. Peter Higgs' contribution to physics has been recognised by numerous academic honours, and most recently, including the, uh, uh, award made by the Royal Society of Edinburgh, a unique, uh, uh, personal medal for him, and the twenty thirty Nonino Prize, man of our time, and of course, Lord Mayor, as you've just referred to, most recently, the Nobel Prize for Physics. So I'm proud that our city council tonight will mark Professor Higgs' connection with us. His name is likely to endure and grow as we learn more about the particle. It also builds in our city's long association with scientific discovery and marks an appropriate start to, uh, the, uh, the science central development, where Professor Higgs and I were able to unveil a plaque in his honour this afternoon. With our generation of the new, we must not forget Newcastle's fantastic science and engineering heritage. From William Armstrong's high-pressure hydraulic machinery and Joseph Quads' notebook, to the steam-driven machinery of Charles Parsons. They helped us to form a culture of scientific discovery that our city still benefits from today. So by honouring Professor Higgs, we not only acknowledge our past as a city, but we underline our growing reputation as a science city of the future, a place where discovery and innovation are in our DNA. And most importantly, we hope that this award will help to inspire the next generation of Newcastle-born and Newcastle-based scientists to discover and achieve. So it is a great privilege to welcome Professor Higgs to the city, and I'd like to invite the council's chief executive to read the resolution agreed by city council. Chief Executive.
At a meeting of the City Council of Newcastle, of Newcastle upon Tyne, specifically convened for the purpose, held in the civic centre of Newcastle upon Tyne on the fourth day of September two thousand and thirteen, it was resolved that the council, in pursuance of its provision, of the provision of the Local Government Act nineteen seventy-two, hereby confers the title of honorary freedom of the city of Newcastle, Newcastle upon Tyne upon Professor Peter Higgs. In recognition of his work in the field of particle physics and the successful prediction of the existence of a new particle, one that gave everything mass, the Higgs boson. I now invite Professor Higgs to sign the register of the honorary freedom, and following that, the Lord Mayor will present Professor Higgs with a proof certificate.
On my else to Newcastle, which was about thirty years ago, when I was an external examiner for a master's degree in mathematics at Newcastle University, I never imagined that my next visit would be for, for this purpose. I, my, my connection with New- Newcastle in terms of residence is very brief indeed. Uh, I, I, I was born, as you've heard, in the Elswick district, uh, but, uh, moved away with my parents to Birmingham before I was one year old. So I, I don't really even speak the language. For the fact that I was born in this city, you should thank the, the BBC. Uh, because my, my father was in Newcastle, uh, for about seven years before I was born here. Uh, he was sent up, uh, as his, it was his first job as a, as an engineer, uh, engineer who, who, uh, had graduated in nineteen twenty-two, which was about the year the BBC was set up. And, um, the BBC designated Newcastle as the centre for its north-east region operation, and that's why my father was here and why I was born here. Otherwise, I, I, I have rather little personal connection with the ci- city. In fact, it's very hard to recognise when I come back to it. But anyway, I, 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 I think I have been, uh, awarded this honour partly because of my recent growth in notoriety, as you've heard. And I'd, I'd simply like to finish by thanking you all very much indeed for honouring me in this way.
Thank you, colleagues. I now close this meeting and give our guests time to depart before starting our other meeting this evening. Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening to this meeting of Newcastle City Council. Apologies?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We've had apologies from councillors Cook, Hobson, Hoodart, McCarty, Packham, Sharon Patterson, Shepherd and David Slezinger. Thank you.
Item two minutes. Does council agree the minutes of the meeting of council held on the fifth of March twenty fourteen? Item three, initial, official announcements. I'd like to take the opportunity to welcome some guests into the council chamber this evening. We have representatives from Elswick Community First Panel, who are here of guests of councillor Schofield. Elswick is one of the three areas in Newcastle to receive government funding to support the community groups to improve community wellbeing, community safety, involvement, community identity and training and development. The panel is made up of eight people who live, work or support activities in Elswick, who identify priorities and recommend local, local groups to fund. We also have some international house students, who are here from Brazil, Switzerland, South Korea, Saudi Arabia, Italy, New Zealand and Libya. I would like to extend a warm welcome to you all from Newcastle City Council. I'd also like to make members aware that today, the second of April, is World Autism Awareness Day. On this day each year, Autism Speaks celebrates Light Up, no, Light It Up Blue, along with the initial autism community. Light It Up Blue is a global, a unique global initiative that kicks off Autism Awareness Month and helps raise awareness about autism. In Newcastle, we have programmed the Tyne Bridge towers to be blue as well as the ground lights located in the footpath on St Nicholas Street under the railway bridge to appro- approaching the High Level Bridge. I'd also like to remind members that the pre-election period for the European and local elections on the twenty-second of May twenty fourteen will start on the tenth of April twenty fourteen. Nomination packs are available from electoral services. Correspondence, we have not received any corris- formal correspondence this month. As we have received one large petition submitted under the council's petition scheme and one public address on the same subject and by the same person, it is proposed that council deals with these two items at the same time. Does council agree to the change, the order of business? Items five and six together, so we've got public address and petitions. As agreed by council, I will now ask Daniel Thompson to give his address to council and submit a large petition which has over two and a half thousand signatures. Mister Thompson, you have up to ten minutes.
I, Daniel Thompson, representing the residents and businesses of Gosforth, hereby signed on the petition and the supporters of STIR this evening, petition Newcastle City Council against the Gosforth Transport Improvements two thousand and thirteen, fourteen, which include a red route through the heart of Gosforth High Street and the reduction of parking capacity in Solers Road car park by fifty percent. We have collected more than two thousand five hundred signatures from residents, shoppers and more than a hundred and twenty businesses in Gosforth, required to trigger a full council debate and review of these proposals. And we ask the council to carefully reconsider the appropriateness of the ideology of a red route plan for Gosforth. We request that you reconsider the reduction of car parking capacity. We also ask why the consultations have been incorrectly carried out. Twice these consultations have been regarded by the aforementioned petitioners as both confusing, misleading, resulting in what we to believe to be maladministration by Newcastle City Council. Consultation leaflet two thousand and fourteen, edition one, has no referral to option three, no change whatsoever, and is only mentioned at the very end of the questionnaire, once all the questions had been asked and answered, therefore making it highly misleading to the public, as was the way it was addressed to the household, making it appear to be junk mail and unimportant. Why has this happened? Subsequently, a second updated leaflet appeared at the drop-ins with option three vaguely mentioned. Presuming that many have replied without being aware of option three, then we must be consider these replies as null and void. I have collected these signatures to illustrate the opposition against so-called Gosforth Transport Improvements two thousand and thirteen, fourteen, and man, and maladministration of subsequent consultations. And I seriously ask if these plans should be dropped and started again. The red routes will initially scare many drivers away, some never to return, as they become aware or fall foul to the stringent enforcement of the red route. Reducing business and footfall on the high street. The council's own statistics show that thirty-one percent of those on the high street and thirty-nine percent of those at Solers Road junction arrive by car. It is madness to discourage such a high proportion of shoppers from coming to Gosforth by making parking more difficult. It is estimated that at least thirty percent of the traffic circulating near the high street is actually cars looking for car parking spaces, causing unnecessary pollution. Imagine the effect on business if they lose more than a third of their business because parking near the high street became too problematic. The initial reduction in trade and footfall would cause many in independent business in Gosforth to go out of business, leading to empty shops and the resulting fall into disrepair of our wonderful high street. We don't want a big market-style high street in Gosforth, full of pubs and takeaways. We want a range of interesting shops, which entice visitors and local residents to visit the high street. The options presented by the council suggest that the displaced parking spaces from Solers Road could be moved to the high street. How can cluttering up the high street with car, car, parked cars improve traffic flow and congestion? Parking on the high street will only worsen the problem, further creating obstacles in the proposed cycle lanes and slow down the thirty-plus bus routes that run along the high street. Many businesses have highlighted the difficulty they have in receiving deliveries and customers find it difficult to collect large purchases, given the absence of loading bays. We suggest, rather than cluttering up the high street, we create short-term parking loading bays just off the high street, on roads off the high street. We also request that you reconsider the reduction of car parking capacity. Government policy and guidelines currently protect parking provision near high streets and further encourage the removal or reduction of parking fees in car parks. Following a nationwide consultation, the government is to publish the resulting guidelines shortly. Shouldn't we wait to see the results of such an important consultation? We need free or cheap parking, not less parking. This could well be enforced through a DISC scheme, making short-term parking possible for shoppers in residential streets, which is currently confusing and inappropriate and could be simplified with a parking DISC. Heavy goods and construction vehicles using the high street should be restricted to off-peak hours. They are the biggest polluters, given that they usually just carry one passenger and buses carry many. And sadly, they are responsible for a high proportion of pedestrian or cycle accidents and deaths. During the day, the high street is not an appropriate place for these vehicles, especially during rush hour. Freeing up double-yellow lines and bat lanes except on refuse collection days would create hundreds of spaces for residents and visitors. Again, a DISC system could be used during the day alongside existing permits. We believe the only way to encourage people to use cycle trucks is to implement twenty-four-hour cycle trucks, which are protected by raised curbs the full length of the high street. By reducing the traffic lanes to one each way, we will calm traffic flow, create space for cycle trucks, invesable, invaluable residential parking spaces where they are desperately needed to the south of the high street, where the current advisory cycle lane tracks are located. Uniquely, this stretch, there is enough space for cycle trucks, traffic and parking. Cycle trucks need to be protected from traffic by a raised curb, and they also need a visual or physical barrier of differentiation from pedestrians to safeguard both cyclists and pedestrians. This can be done by use of a variety of curb barriers, coloured cycle trucks, using different materials in their construction. The use of drop pavements then raised curb wide enough to offer protection from traffic and parked cars, doors opening, followed where possible by parking spaces and then traffic lanes is the best solution. The cycle trucks could be dual or placed upon either side of the road, although dual cycle trucks may take up less road space and make junctions and turning points easier and cheaper to implement, depending on the design and the physical protection method. In any case, we ask that the design of junctions and turning points be more carefully considered. We also urge planners to consent more fully with organisations, organisations such as the Newcastle Cycling Campaign, who some may argue have been wholly underconsulted. To the south of the high street, the lack of street furniture and utility cabinets, as well as spacious width of the pavements, mean that cycle trucks and parking spaces can be implemented readily cheaply and simply compared to other areas of the high street. In addition, the area is residential rather than commercial, given the total absence of retail outlets. There is absolutely no need for a red route if cycle trucks are protected and traffic is reduced to one lane each way. Many of our supporters have expressed their disbelief that it's currently impossible to take their bicycle on the metro. If we are serious about encouraging people to take up cycling, we need to allow passengers to take their cycles on the metro. We also need to increase the provision of cycle parks, especially at region centre and especially on Gosforth High Street. With the increased number of cyclists, it is obvious that we will need places to safely and securely park them. We feel that due to the huge amount- We feel that due to the huge amount of rejection of the Gosforth Transport Improvements 2013/14, they have been rendered morybund. We need proposals that put residents, whether they be pedestrians, cyclists, motorists or businesses, at the heart of these proposals. We don't need a red route. We are not London or Birmingham. We are a big city, but not a huge city, and our transport problems are different to larger metropolitan cities and certainly not the same in Gosforth. Each area is unique and needs individually designed solutions, not one-size-fits-all red route. Do you want to implement unsafe cycle lanes? Does the council want to drive away business from the High Street? Does the council want to destroy business? Small businesses on the High Street employ more than 1,000 people. Are you going to neglect small business over big business? What studies have been carried out to assess the damage these proposals will do to small independent businesses on the High Street? None. Why? Is it because Newcastle City Council doesn't care about small business? Hard-working folk, business and entrepreneurs made this city great, not politicians. We hereby call for no reduction in car parking at all, protected 24-hour cycle lanes, the reduction of traffic to one lane each way, stop the red route. Thank you, Daniel Thompson, STIR.
In accordance with the petition scheme, I will now ask councillor Bell to respond, and there will be scope for council to debate the matter for up to 15 minutes before deciding on what action to take in respect of the petition. Councillor Bell?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. If I can take the last point first, and I'd like to propose to council what action we should like to take with the petition, and that is to receive the petition and also commission further investigation into the issues raised in the petition as part of the ongoing consultation. That will be my motion to council tonight, Lord Mayor. We have first of all put on record my thanks to the members of Newcastle City Council's staff who have been leading on the consultation. I do believe that they have done an absolutely professional and tremendous job. Sometimes, sometimes when some of the residents that came onto the communications consultation bus haven't been of a polite frame of mind, should we say, and sometimes I would say downright rude to the members of staff. I'm going to discuss this with our cabinet members with responsibilities for that area to see how we can further protect staff when actually doing meaningful consultation in the public. So I think that the members of staff can lift their heads high, but some of the residents, unfortunately, Lord Mayor, should dip their heads in shame with the way that they have treated our staff. I'd like to thank STIR for the opportunity to address the petition and the presentation, and I've came back with some facts that may be of interest. Gosforth High Street, the Great North Road, is the slowest of all the main routes in Tynumia during rush hour, with an average travel time of 7.3 minutes per mile. It has the slowest journey times during the day, with an average travel time of 5.21 minutes per mile. Through the High Street itself, this raises to 11.1 minutes per mile peak and 4.6 interpeak. Gosforth air quality, Gosforth is in an air quality management area. Research carried out, not by us but by Newcastle University, tells us that unless the volume of cars is reduced and congestion reduced, levels of pollution will not decrease. In Gosforth, the accident record speaks for itself. Between 2004 and 2012, there have been 54 accidents along the High Street, 32 at Salters Junction, 29 at Hollywood Avenue, 17 at Region Centre, 169 in total, Lord Mayor, between Broadbury to the Talmor. Once every two weeks, someone goes to hospital as a result of an accident on this stretch of road. In the last five years, 19 car drivers and 15 cyclists were hurt. This means that you are 20 times more likely to be injured as a cyclist than as in a car along the High Street. Records show that it is the 11th most dangerous location in the city for cyclists. The options we have been consulting on will reduce accidents. We think the savings will equate to over £600,000 per year and reduce costs to the NHS, emergency services and society in general. Will reduce congestion and delays that cost the city and its residents hundreds of thousands of pounds per year. Will reduce emissions on the High Street and help combat associated health problems with pollutants. These improvements will help make buses more reliable and encourage people to use them and keep using them. These improvements will help encourage walking and cycling on the High Street. They will rationalise parking and loading facilities and improve the vibrancy of the High Street. Deliver on our ambitions for the High Street, which have been publicly debated since 2009. Lord Mayor, there's a lot more that I could actually say on that. I was actually informed that I had 10 minutes. I don't think the 10 minutes has went by. The red lights came on, can I just ask for clarification?
Is that right? He just gets five minutes?
It's three minutes.
Yeah, it's three minutes.
Okay, I was informed, wasn't I? Lord Mayor?
You have to put your 10 minutes into three.
The motion to council tonight, as I did originally want, to receive the petition, investigate further as part of the ongoing consultation. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Now I'll ask councillor Johnson to second.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I second councillor Bell's proposal and reserve the right to speak. Thank you.
And I'll ask councillor Cot to speak.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I'd like first of all to thank the representatives of STIR and Mr Thompson for coming to the meeting tonight and raising issues which are of concern to local residents and businesses in the local area. And I admire Mr Thompson's tenacity and representatives of STIR's tenacity going out and collecting signatures to show and demonstrate that there are concerns about some of these proposals. It's something that we as local representatives in the area have been discussing with residents. We've undertaken our own consultation exercise, and what we're finding is there are actually a variety of views that's coming forward. Some residents are in favour of some of the options, but lots of residents have lots of different views, and today we've heard some more of the views of STIR, which I think are quite interesting. And the city council has to demonstrate that it is listening to those views as part of this consultation. There's a lot of cynicism out there because of some of the reasons that Mr Thompson has mentioned about the nature of the consultation. We haven't got time to go into the details of all of that today, but certainly it has been a less than perfect consultation, and it's left a number of people very unhappy and very concerned about it. There have been some useful consultation meetings. I'm aware that the staff have felt that some of the ways in which one or two people have presented themselves hasn't necessarily been the best, and I appreciate the comments to raise around that, and if there have been any issues, then I do regret that. But I think most people have come along to raise their issues and to get more information about these proposals. We've had a lot of correspondence, and currently personally getting about four or five pieces of correspondence every day about this particular issue. And whilst there are differences of opinion, one of the critical issues is big concern about loss of car parking space in the area, particularly around the loss of half of Salters Road car park. There are businesses who are concerned, I've spoken to those businesses, there are residents who are concerned, and I think the city council needs to be looking at this issue in particular. It hasn't considered any other options, as far as I'm aware, and I think it seems to be trying to push this forward. There was a leaflet that came through the door the other day from the Labour Party, which suggested this scheme will happen, and I'm not sure where the council stands on this issue. But I think it's really important a decision about that is made in public, and I know that when councillor Bell meets to discuss the next stage with officers, I'm hoping that he will be inclined to bring this to Cabinet, so this is discussed in public. There are also concerns in the area around aspects of the red routes. We think the council's taking an arbitrary view on this, looking at extending it into a residential area. We would like that to be looked at, certainly, but there are a range of concerns that residents have, and I can see the time. I could go into a lot of detail about this, but I'm not going to be able to, unfortunately. That will have to be for another time. But we, as local representatives in the area, care passionately about the High Street. We've worked long and hard over many years, we're really keen to work with STIR and residents and businesses in the area. My colleagues, two of my colleagues, are actually at a meeting tonight with businesses to have a discussion about those issues. And as my colleague councillor Slesinger would say, just to finish off, there needs to be some sense and sensibility about some of these issues. We need to have a wide discussion, we need to collect views together, the city council needs to be seen to reacting to the views of local residents, and we need to determine a way forward. This has been a less than perfect exercise, and it's upset a lot of people, but there needs to be a discussion, and we would like to be involved as ward members, and I hope that the Cabinet member will include us more in those discussions so we can represent more effectively the views that come forward. So thank you very much, I'll leave it there. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Leggett?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I suppose I should start by declaring an interest. I'm not only a Gosforth councillor, but I'm also a resident of East Gosforth, and I think no one has to persuade me just how important this issue is. And I have to say, I agree with many of the sentiments of Mr Thompson and the STIR. I believe that anybody who really believes that Gosforth currently has no issues regarding traffic for residents, pedestrians, traders, residents, anybody, cyclists, I think anybody who believes that is clearly very mistaken, because there are many issues in Gosforth which need to be addressed. And we, all of the councillors from East Gosforth, certainly welcome the fact that there is now a lengthy debate about what is going on and what improvements will be made, and the fact that there is funding to back this up. I think we all agree that this is actually a massive decision. I doubt whether we'll see such an opportunity in my lifetime again, although maybe that won't apply to some of my colleagues, but I think it's absolutely vital that we get it right. Now, I think the councillors' views have always been absolutely clear on this, and we have received a lot of praise for some of our literature, which I think has attempted to give a balanced view as to what the various arguments are and what the issues are within Gosforth. But ultimately, we certainly believe that the final decision as to what should happen really rests with us, residents. It rests with traders, it rests with residents, and there really shouldn't be the sort of narrow perspective that comes from the council, from politicians or from various pressure groups. We are also on record as saying that we will abide by the results of the consultation. Now, the consultation period hasn't finished, it's got two more days to run, so we certainly hope that no decisions have been made already. We're hearing rumours that there might have been, but we certainly hope that that is not the case and decisions haven't been made. And we certainly call upon the administration to make the pledge that we have made, and I believe it's partially been made tonight, that they will also abide by the results of the consultation, whatever that might be. Another concern that we've had has certainly been that there's been a fair amount of misinformation going around. Again, I hope we have tried to make that a little bit clearer, but I think there's been a lot of misinformation and a lot of misapprehensions going around. To be fair, our colleagues at STIR have actually condemned some of the worst aspects of the way that council officers have been treated. I certainly would condemn any of those which has been mentioned. But I hope that now more information is available, more views are coming forward from the cycling lobby, from Mr Thompson and his STIR colleagues, more information is available in the latest rounds of consultation, and I hope that there will now be sufficient information for people to make sensible decisions on things like the red routes, on things like the remodelling of the junction at Salters Road and Church Road and the High Streets, cycling improvements. A lot of information is now available, and I hope options have been made available to the public. But can I emphasise that we, the councillors of Gosforth, certainly believe that the people who will make that final decision should be the residents of Gosforth. In other words, Mr Thompson, the choice is ours. Thank you very much.
Councillor Johnson?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. There's just one or two issues that I would like to pick up, if that's okay. The first is my own personal experience. Whilst I am a city councillor in Newcastle, I'm also during the day an employee of a small business, so I do fully recognise the challenges that small businesses face trading in Newcastle. But what I do refute is Mr Thompson's claim that Newcastle City Council does nothing to support small businesses. Newcastle City Council does plenty to support small businesses, Mr Thompson, and I'm going to give you a few examples of that right now. The first is when the independent traders on High Bridge came to us and requested that Newcastle City Council close the road to traffic for a day to encourage trade on that street. We complied with their request, we worked with them to make sure that we promoted their activity and really encouraged independent trade on that street. The city council invested heavily in the Toffey Factory in the Yewsburn, which provides facilities for creative media businesses to locate and to start. Newcastle City Council continues to manage workspace for small businesses such as I6 on Charlotte Square, which has a range of thriving small businesses. Newcastle City Council continues to manage the Granger Market, which is one of the most vibrant retail outlets in the north of England. So all that I would say is, I could go on about the other activities that we've undertaken, I could go on about how I feel that actually improving traffic flow through Gosforth would be beneficial to people, it would attract people to the area. You hear from people nowadays who say that the current congestion is, it actually discourages them from visiting Gosforth as a retail location. But the main point that I want to get across, Lord Mayor, is that Newcastle City does plenty to support small businesses, and it's not true to suggest that it does not. Thank you.
Thank you. Now invite councillor Bell to respond.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just like to finish off just with one point, just a reiteration if I can, is just to make sure that everybody understands that this has been publicly, this issue's been publicly debated since 2009. So when this round of consultation is concluded, then the decision will be made after we analyse all of the information that comes in, and it's not just one bit of consultation, not just one bit of evidence. There will be a huge pile of evidence that we have to wade through to try to come up with the right decision. And the right decision has to be made. Great North Road, Gosforth High Street has a great history, and it goes back. Anybody can look it up and you'll see that ever since Horse and Court days, that there has been carriages that would went through from London, York, Newcastle, using the Great North Road to go to Edinburgh. And then when the motor vehicle came along, indeed, the main route was still through Gosforth. So Gosforth High Street has changed, changed immensely in the late 60s when we're seeing the A1 Western Bypass, or A1M introduced, and how that changed things. So Gosforth will change, and our responsibility, our corporate responsibility, is to make sure that we change things for the better. I don't like actually quoting just statistics, especially when you're talking about humans, because each one of them's statistics was probably somebody's son or daughter, mother or father. We've had lives lost on the High Street, and I'm talking about civil and civic responsibilities that we all share. And I do believe that when we're trying to do something and make Gosforth High Street the Great North Road better for the next generation, that we have to bear that in mind. You know, Lord Mayor, that my professional job as a firefighter, and I'm not going to tell tales of some of the incidents that I've had to attend, but we spend an immense amount of time as professional firefighters in road traffic collisions, and sometimes some of the most horrendous injuries and fatalities are caused with slow-moving traffic. I would like to think that when I leave office, that I've done what I can to try to prevent another statistic, to try to prevent another person from being trapped under a large good vehicle's wheels, or to prevent somebody being mangled around the axle of a lorry. So, Lord Mayor, I'm going to try my best to serve the people of this city. It's not just going to be one area that I have to serve, it's the city that I represent, and I think all of us have to make that decision, and it will be made in public, and there's been no decisions yet. I'll move my resolution. Thank you.
Can I just ask if councillor Bell could answer councillor Cot's point, which is whether he's willing to allow the decision to go to, to be made by Cabinet in public rather than the decision being taken by himself in a room upstairs here?
Members now vote on the proposed motion? Said it wasn't a point of order. Can we vote on the proposed? Can we vote on the proposed motion, please? Thank you. That's a total of 59, so that's been agreed. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr Thompson. Item seven is questions by members. We have received three questions marked for written reply. These, together with the responses, have been circulated and also displayed in the foyer. Item eight, the portfolio report, leader of council. I will now call on Councillor Forbes to introduce the report.
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Do you want to give the noisy people a chance?
I'll just wait a moment till the people that want to leave have done so. Thank you, Lord Mayor, and it's a great pleasure to present my annual report to city council, which has already been to the scrutiny committee, the Oireanna and Scrutiny Committee, and I'm very grateful for their comments and constructive questions during the debate that we had just last week. The picture that I chose for the front of this is of the latest redevelopment at the Tyneside Cinema, and the reason I chose it, because I think it's a really good symbol of the amount of development work that's going on in our city at the moment. I think we have a very visible sign of confidence that Newcastle is a place which is open for business, and you only have to look around at the skyline of the city to see the number of cranes, and you only have to walk around to see the amount of work that's going on to realise what competence there is in the city now. In fact, Lord Mayor, just this afternoon I went with Professor Higgs to the Science Central site, and I'm finding myself visiting building sites and development sites so often now, I've had to get my own pair of boots and my own hard hat, rather than having to keep borrowing them. And I think that's a testament to the work that we've done as a council over the last two years to prepare Newcastle for the upturn which we're starting to see. We've been through some really difficult times in the city, and as I said to council several years ago, our job at the moment is to prepare the city for that upturn. There are a couple of things, a number of items that I'd just like to draw members' attention to with an update to the content of the report when I originally wrote it about three weeks ago, just to give members the latest information on a number of important areas. Firstly, Newcastle continues to play an important role within the core cities cabinet, and the Local Government Association has been in conversation with the core cities about how it can best respond to the changing policy environments that we find ourselves in. And I'm delighted that the LGA has decided to create a new cities board to replace the urban commission, and the first meeting of that cities board will be next Monday, and I'm one of the people from the core cities who will be representatives on that new cities board at the LGA. And I think that provides us with another great opportunity to have a meaningful dialogue with government about devolution and power for major cities. Secondly, I know that a number of colleagues have been following the debate around the combined authority very closely, and I'm very pleased that we've had the indication that the debate around the order is likely to take place in Parliament next week, and the combined authority itself will come into force as soon as possible after that parliamentary debate. It was announced just the other day that a number of the leaders have taken portfolio positions within the combined authority, within the leaders' board of the leaders and elected mayor. Paul Watson will lead on economic development and regeneration. Councillor Grant Davy from Northumberland will lead on innovation and skills, and I will lead from Newcastle's perspective on transport issues. And there will be a new transport committee called Transport North East, where there'll be representation across the seven authorities in the combined authority area to take strategic decisions about transport arrangements. That, of course, Lord Mayor, means that the combined authority, when it's introduced, will formally replace the ITA with these new governance arrangements. And I'd like to put on record my thanks to all of those members who've served as members of the ITA, but particularly to Councillor David Wood, who has chaired the ITA with great integrity and great diligence over the last decade or so. And I think we've seen huge amounts of investment, not just in the metro and the reinvigoration and the new ticketing system and the track upgrades, but also in our bus routes as well. And I think the whole council owes Councillor David Wood and other colleagues on the ITA a huge vote of thanks. Lord Mayor, just a comment on another couple of topical issues, if I may. The number of councils which have signed up to the Newcastle Declaration on Tobacco Control has now exceeded 50, and I'm really pleased that Newcastle is being seen to lead the way on public health issues around the country. Members may have followed the recent debate around the proposed closure of the Scotswood GP practice, and I'm pleased that because of my intervention along with the ward councillors for that area, we managed to put forward an alternative proposal to NHS England, which was taken up as a temporary measure, and that's given us breathing space to think about the long-term future for that practice in an important part of the city where we see population growth at last starting to happen. And members may have heard that our clinical commissioning groups have announced a proposal to merge, not just the two Newcastle ones, but also with Gateshead. And I will be pressing the CCGs to spell out exactly what the benefits to Newcastle are of that merger, and to explain to members why we need to have a clinical commissioning group which is larger than the geographical footprint of the city. And I know members may well want to get involved in the CCG's consultation and debate around that. So as I say, Lord Mayor, I'm very grateful for the constructive debate we had at scrutiny, and I'm happy to try to answer any questions that members may have.
Questions, Councillor Kane?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you for the report. It's only half as long in pages as the grand report we received two years ago, but actually seems to have much the same content, a lot of it seems to come around again. Something that bothers me about it is there is a lack of detail. I'm going to go through sort of just page by page and pick up on a few points. For example, page 17, it says 1,589 new homes are built across the city. Nowhere in the report does it say where. Page 18, it says increased recycle rates, it doesn't say by how much, from what rate to what rate, or any caveats beyond that. And page 19, introduced a single phone number for the council rather than the former system of hundreds of public phone numbers. Well, that's welcome. Is he aware and does he approve of the fact that street lighting, if you want to report a street light out, you can no longer call EnviroEyes, you have to call a contractor instead, which seems to go against that movement? Yes, on page 34, we have the dreaded green thread at the top there. As I've said before, green thread to me just says greenwash. There's some talk, but no examples of what it means by that. Likewise, on page 34, there's a complaint that the government hasn't provided any funding, but without stipulating whether or not the council has applied for funding from the government. I'm not saying they haven't, but the detail's not here unfortunately to make that judgement. Page 36, the living wage. I've only just realised that the Newcastle living wage isn't a living wage. The living wage this year is £7.65, and I think by describing £7.20 as a living wage is slightly misleading, because living wage means something very specifically. Likewise, in the third paragraph there, it says it will rise much more quickly than the national living wage to £7.55. Again, I'm a little bit confused by that, because surely a living wage is a living wage, and I would like Councillor Forbes to sort of clarify what he means by that. Page 39, we've just heard Councillor Forbes talking about public health. At the bottom there, he makes quite a claim for shaping the, you know, public health in the city, and I can understand why he wants to do that as leader of council, but perhaps he could outline what measures he's going to put in place to make sure he has no conflict of interest with his day job. And page 42, being a cooperative council, there's almost a whole page of text there that doesn't tell us anything new about cooperative councils. Still very aspirational, there's no examples here. If he wants examples, I can give him things like Friends of Heaton Armstrong Park who do fantastic pioneering work on filling in spaces where council services have retreated. But I think there's a feeling in the, you know, in the communities and public groups and amongst officers that this hasn't really been spelt out to them, to the people who are trying to make it happen, how a cooperative council will actually work and practise. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Faulkner, I'm not reminding you, Councillor Faulkner, but can I please remind councillors that when the amber light comes on, you start to wind down, and when the red light comes on, you sit down. Thank you. But not for you, Councillor Faulkner.
I know you wouldn't have met me, Lord Mayor. I wouldn't possibly overrun, Lord Mayor. Well, my question is really, I suppose, in part why the leader chose to present it in this way, this kind of long list of things at the front, surely the fact that there's an election coming has nothing to do with this, some of which are referred to, but not by no means all of them later on, and amplified, some of them get no further reference. Some of them are, of course, things that were begun by the former administration, in fact, some of them are things that you campaigned against when we were doing them, but now you're claiming credit for all of these. Well, fair enough, if that's the way you want to do it, but I think people can see through some of this. On the substance of it, though, I just want to share our support for the combined authority, but I just really want to test Councillor Forbes' views about how far he thinks this will go. Because for me, if we're really going to be transformational as far as the combined authority is concerned, I think we've got to put together our seven economic development teams into one, we've got to put together our seven tourism teams, we've got to rationalise and standardise as much as possible all those business-facing support and regulatory services so that the small businesses that Councillor Johnson talked about before don't have to go seven different ways, it's seven different approaches to seven different councils. And I just wonder whether he supports that approach, and we can take a really dynamic transformational view about it, rather than it just being a slightly better version of the multi-area agreement, which actually didn't make much progress in the end.
Councillor Forbes, do you want to take these after every two questions or just at the end?
I'll take them at the end.
Right, good, thanks. Councillor Cot? Oh, he's disappeared, that's a shame. Councillor Taylor, missed his chance.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just on the list of achievements, can I ask if Councillor Forbes would agree that the introduction of mandatory 20 mile an hour speed limits, which is actually in his portfolio, was introduced by the Liberal Democrats, that we had a three-year programme to do that, and the only reason that they weren't initially mandatory and only advisory was the then Labour government refused to allow us to put in mandatory speed limits, and as soon as that regulation changed, we went ahead. So yes, they completed the programme, but it was certainly agreed and started under the Liberal Democrats, so I hope he agrees that. Just a couple of things on public health. Councillor Forbes talks about the federated approach, federated model, and I just wondered if you could clarify what exactly he means by that and what he thinks it would achieve. And as, on second thing, as I believe this week he's signing off the Better Care Fund, I just wondered if you could say a little bit about what's going to be in that, and again, what you think that can achieve over the next few years.
Councillor Anita Lower?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I don't want to go over the things that we raised last week in scrutiny, however, there was one that we didn't get around to that I wanted to ask about, Councillor Forbes, and it was actually about the tobacco declaration. And I was just wondering, it says in the report in May this year, but I think it was actually last year that we passed this, and it's almost a year on, and I just wondered if there were now any figures or anything to show that just how successful or what difference has been made over the last 12 months to smoking cessation across the city. Thank you.
Councillor Woodock?
Yes, Lord Mayor, it's only a short question. As a former secretary of the Newcastle University Railway Society, page 32, where he talks about the changes with regard to east coast, obviously it's important, you know who you're dealing with. Could you just, the first paragraph there, could you just confirm, does he, as a point of principle, want train operating companies to be in the public sector? Yes or no?
Councillor Bell?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can the need of council please comment on the page 17, it mentioned the city deal, how important he feels the future of that deal is for the future of the city and the vibrancy of the city? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Stone?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just to follow on from Councillor Faulkner's comments on the combined authority, will the leader accept that the gestation and birth has been a little bit more difficult than perhaps might have been envisaged, and that mixed messages have been put out both by himself and the leader of Sunderland with regard to the involvement, potential for involvement of opposition members in the new structures? And I think that many feel, certainly on this side of the chamber and in other authorities as well, that we do have some concerns about the transparency and effectiveness of a system which is largely dominated by one party. We accept there has been some very late efforts made to put some opposition members on the scrutiny panel, but there is a concern that that is not being done in a very collegiate and very sort of open and combined way, shall we say. And finally, could I ask for some assurances from the leader that he does not expect the North East Combined Authority to end up in the same level of bickering that the Merseyside one is currently doing? Thank you.
Councillor Cot, you've got five seconds to get to your seat if you want to ask a question. Right, okay, thank you. Councillor Forbes, would you like to reply?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'll try to deal with all of the points that people raised. I won't deal with all of the detailed legals that Councillor Kane had, I'll just simply point out to him that he's asking for both more detail and complaining that the, and thanking me for the report being half as long. Well, unless you're a Lib Dem, you can't ask for two contradictory things at once, but he manages to do that time after time again. And on the living wage, on the living wage, we have taken action as a council to address one of the fundamental causes of poverty, which is low pay for people in work, and we have introduced a living wage on the advice of a living wage commission in the city, which advised us on what the rate should be, and we've sought to bring that rate up from £7.20 an hour to £7.55 an hour from yesterday. We know that the national living wage is set as higher than that, and we want to try to converge over a period of time. That, I think, is a very sensible way forward, and let's not forget that the living wage was opposed in principle by many of the people who were sat on that side of the chamber. Now, Councillor Faulkner talked about the list of achievements, and I'm very proud of the list of achievements that are set out in this report that the cabinet team are achieving. He raises the issue about the combined authority, and what I would say is this, on the combined authority, we need to walk before we can run. We need to make sure that we have a shared vision for the future and the way forward to the future, and I will not do anything which is not in the best interests of Newcastle and the wider region. And it will take time, Lord Mayor, for us to establish the programme of work for the combined authority, not least because we have to work with the local enterprise partnership that's currently going through a process of negotiating the strategic economic plan with government, and until we have the outcome of that process, it's quite difficult to know exactly where the policy landscape or even the financial landscape will lie. But I'm very clear that the combined authority needs to have a positive and ambitious vision for the North East area, and I'm working with my other colleagues as leaders to bring that about. Councillor Taylor has a rather half-hearted attempt at rewriting history here, because those of us that have been on the council long enough will remember that it was actually us from opposition who led the charge for mandatory 20 mile an hour schemes against the then administration's proposal for advisory schemes, and I'm very pleased, and I'm very pleased, I'm very pleased that we now have mandatory 20 mile an hour schemes in the city, and I think that there is still more that we can do, particularly on roads that are 30 mile an hour limits, but that have schools on them, and I think that's something that we should continue to look at. The other question she asked me was about the federated model for Public Health England. I think this is an important point here. Public Health England is the new national body to drive public health in this country, and yet, my concern is that if it's not careful, it will become to be seen as a remote organisation distanced from the communities that it's seeking to serve. And what I've suggested to the chief exec of Public Health England is that a federated model, building on the strengths and knowledge at a local level, would give PHE even greater mandates to champion public health causes at a national level with government. I certainly don't want to see government policy being considered too controversial for comment. for comment by PHE, which is the current view from within it. And on the Better Care Fund, the timescales for dealing with the Better Care Fund, as members will know, have been absolutely ridiculous. The final draft has to be in at the end of this week, a first draft had to be in by the 14th of February, and the council and its partners in the health service were given less than three months to put together a package which sets out an ambitious vision for integration of health and social care in the city. And not least, Lord Mayor, made more difficult by the fact that although the messages from politicians in government were that this was new money, in fact, it was money which was already locked up in the existing system. So the conversation with our partners has been, how can we get better value out of existing resources? And the Better Care Fund has given us some opportunities to enter that conversation, but I think the government's level of ambition for the Better Care Fund really wasn't enough in order to bring about the kind of step change that we need to see in integration for the wider benefit of our communities and people who most need health and social care services. councillor Lower asked me about the tobacco declaration, and I'm really pleased that in one sense, the North East is not the worst area of the country anymore in their public health figures, because we're now only the second worst region in the country for smoking prevalence. We've dropped from 28% down to 21.9% in the last five years. That's good, but it shows that, and it shows that we can make a difference, but we've also got a long way to go with narrowing that gap. And the fact that one in five, more than one in five of our population still smoke, I think, is a real concern if we think about not just the health and wellbeing of those individuals, but also the long-term costs that that means for our economy, for our health service, for our businesses, and for councils in terms of cleaning up litter and dealing with tobacco-related illness and care. So there is a long way that we need to go on smoking, but I'm pleased that through the public health budget, we continue to commission smoking cessation services, and our smoking cessation services in Newcastle are reported to be one of the best smoking cessation services in the country in terms of the outcomes they achieve. councillor Woodock asked about East Coast, and I would just remind him that it is this council's policy to oppose privatisation of the East Coast Main Line, so in direct answer to your question councillor Woodock, yes, I think it will be better served in the public sector, however, that does not mean that we will not engage positively with those people that are making tenders for the franchise in order to ensure that the business and traveller needs of the city are met in whatever franchise arrangements are eventually arrived at. What I am very pleased about is that the secretary of state has responded to the direct lobbying that I did around the ownership of the central station and removed it from the franchise for East Coast, and it will in future be managed by Network Rail. That unlocks huge potential for development in the station, because Network Rail can take a long-term view about investment, and I very much hope that that's a very powerful symbol of the positive relationship that I'm able to have with government ministers in order to bring about positive achievements for the city. councillor Bell asked how important the city deal is for the future. I think it's hugely important, because not only has it brought about the sense of confidence that we now have in our city's economy, but it's vital that in the long term, we have a greater sense of our local financial sustainability as a city. It's very clear that if we simply to rely on government grants, we'll have less and less and less money, and the city deal offers us an opportunity to have greater revenue-raising powers and retention powers through the ADZ, and I hope there will be a model for other council devolution models, and I no doubt that our experience will be one of the things that are discussed in due time through the LGA cities board that I spoke about earlier. I certainly think we have a good story to tell here in Newcastle, and I think the long-term vision for the city deal, particularly the financial element of it, is about making sure that the city is sustainable in the generations to come. And councillor Stone talked again about the combined authority, but in particular the involvement of opposition members, and I just want to make it clear to council tonight that all the way throughout the discussions within the combined authority or the developments of the combined authority, I've been very clear that there needs to be a very effective and politically balanced scrutiny function for the combined authority. We simply couldn't have a group of leaders making decisions without appropriate checks and balances, and I'm very pleased that the constitution for the combined authority recognises that there is an important role for scrutiny to play, and I argued particularly that rather than have two representatives from one party in Newcastle, we would have balanced political representation, which allows our opposition a very significant role in the scrutiny of the combined authority as it moves forward. And I hope that opposition members will take up that opportunity to work constructively, but in a critical friend role within the new combined authority scrutiny arrangements. I think I've covered all of the points, Lord Mayor, so thank you very much indeed for the opportunity to answer those questions.
Thank you very much. Does council agree to receive the report? Item nine appointments, are the appointments agreed as set out? Item 10, notice of motion, the abolition of the emergency welfare fund. I call on councillor Struthers to move the report.
In my role as a councillor, in my daytime job, my employer is, shall we say, Leicester Kane, and I sit par in this discussion, so we'll draw from the meeting.
Thank you for that. So I call on councillor Struthers to move the report, seconded by councillor McCarthy.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and I'd just like to start with an apology. If I'm not able to speak with the passion that I feel about this is because I'm a bit full of cold and a bit low on energy, but I hope I can get my main arguments across. Now, in moving this motion, I am looking for support from across the council, because I believe if we can be united on this, we can encourage others in the city who I know are concerned about the abolition of the emergency welfare fund, to add their voice to persuade the government to maintain this safety net for our most vulnerable citizens. And although I'm looking for broad support, it's hard not to be political, because political decisions are affecting people's lives. Only a few weeks ago, the bishops accused the government of going too far in welfare reform, as they call it, leaving the poorest of people destitute. The government, of course, denied this, but here we are with the DWP's abolition of the emergency welfare fund, we have another nail in the coffin of the social security protection, which indeed could leave people destitute and in despair. I think it might be helpful just to put this motion in a bit of historical context. We've had a social assistance scheme, schemes in this country since the 1934 Unemployment Assistance Act. We then had Beveridge's post-war social assistance schemes, which underpinned the national insurance programme, which was introduced by Labour. Those schemes were means tested, but they had some element of entitlement for crisis based on criteria for grants for essential household items. But then in the 1980s, under the Tory government, which I was actively campaigning against, they introduced the social fund, which abolished those entitlements and replaced them by restrictive loan, a loan system called the social fund. This was at least a nationally minister scheme. Then last year, the buck was passed to local government, where the social fund was localised and made purely discretionary, and funding made available by the government for our administration of it was not based on any evidence of need. Now, the local welfare assistance fund, to give it its proper name, is to be cut. DWP will no longer provide, the responsibility is being passed to the Department for Communities and Local Government, where there is no commitment that they're going to maintain this funding, but they've only promised a review post Act 2015. So there's no certainty about continued funding, and the review means the door is not completely closed, but we know Eric Pickles is a hard man. This council has risen to the challenge of the localisation of the social fund. It has been committed, creative and compassionate, in doing its utmost to prevent people falling into destitution through the policies we have introduced and its active inclusion in Newcastle team. I would like to pay tribute to the active in Newcastle team, it is amazing, we are lucky to have these staff, and we are proud of what they have achieved. Even now, in the face of looming disaster, they're doing their best to forward plan to make the best of a bad job. So briefly, what are we doing in Newcastle? In this current year, we'll be spending £1.34 million, this is the last year of the fund. In response to that localisation which I've referred to, there are two elements of the scheme, the supporting independence scheme, which essentially provides furniture and white goods to people who are to be settled in the community, who are at the risk of having to move into an institution. From April to December last year, 397 households were helped with an average award of £1,065. After three months, 96% of them were found to be sustained in living independently, so it was a great success. But the SIS scheme is not just helping in crisis, but it is aligning help with other local support services to facilitate opportunities and to help build resilience amongst vulnerable people. The other local use is the crisis support scheme. The needs being met are very wide, but they arise for exceptional crisis experiences. So for example, from April to December last year, the fund assisted 1,769 households with shopping packages, credit for fuel, clothing vouchers, et cetera, and at Christmas, free school meals were provided for children in the school holidays and other vulnerable people were supported. It's not possible in this time to do justice, and I see that the light is on, to tell you about the breadth and depth of the partnership working of Newcastle's administration, but I can only mention the reasons for maintaining it. The loss of this fund will impact very seriously on the risk of homelessness because of delays of moving people from supported housing into independent living. There are many, I can see that my time is running out. So what I'm asking in this resolution is that we use the analysis of need we have, that we need to publicise the benefits of this fund by using case studies, and secondly, we should support the local government association's representation to government to maintain the fund, and bearing in mind the local government association is Tory-led, so they think it's a bad policy too. And we should mobilise support from our local citizens who will share our concerns. So a letter to ministers, MPs and the press, signed by a wide range of leaders from communities, faith communities, churches, the voluntary community sector and businesses, should help make our case. So I urge council to support this motion, and in so doing, we will try and use our networks to make this issue everybody's business. Thank you.
councillor McCarthy.
I've got two speakers, councillor Faulkner.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. councillor Struthers' motion is timely and is correct, and we are more than happy to support it and add what voice we can to the campaigning bit and the action bit of the motion. We are supporters of crisis funds, she's traced the history, they're a critical part of the welfare system to help vulnerable people and people who fall into desperate need, very often through changes of circumstances which are no fault of their own. However, I'm a bit puzzled about what's going on here nationally. I asked the deputy leader a few months ago about the extent to which we were taking up our allocation, and I was pleased that she was able to confirm that we'd taken up a full allocation last year, although I think at the time, we were one of the authorities that actually hadn't put in an application for 1415, but I presume we have now. But, you know, that's not true of all councils, and there are councils all around the country that despite all of these stories that we've got of genuine and pressing need, are actually not spending the allocations that the government have given them. And it's bizarre, and I read an article, and I guess some of you might have read it too, by the MP for Rochdale a couple of months ago in The Guardian, who said of his own council that he discovered that in looking at this fund that they'd been given, that the council tightened the criteria, so it prevented many people in genuine need from being able to access it, and in the first six months of last year, they'd spent only 20% of the money available, and they'd spent more on administration than they'd actually given out. I find that really quite bizarre. This morning, some of you will have seen in the Journal, Durham County Council, similar deprivation profile to ours, similar needs, you would imagine, given an allocation of £2 million, they've spent 15% of it, that's all. In fact, even worse, they've siphoned off the rest of it to support other projects, no doubt worthy in their own right, community projects and business support projects and all the rest of it, but actually, that's not what the money was there for. And worse still, it actually just makes it very easy for people in the political system, and we know where they reside, to actually turn that against local government and say, well, you don't really need it, there's no need for that. So I don't know what game's being played by some councils around the country, but I find it really very, very odd indeed. And the same is true on discretionary housing payments, where actually, there are few, the halfway figures I saw inside housing had discovered that only 28% of Labour councils had spent their pro-rata allocation at the time, 29% Conservative, 40% Liberal Democrat. What's going on? These are desperately needed funds, and if we want to make the case for them continuing, then local government should be using them to the fullest possible extent. Now, I saw a letter, I've got sight of a letter, some of, perhaps councillor Struthers seen it, it was from Steve Webb, the pensions minister, to the aforementioned Local Government Association leader, Mayor O'Kochel, confirming that he's happy to be part of a review that would carry on during the course of 2014. So that does give us a time, time to do exactly what councillor Struthers is mentioning, which is to put in all the examples of the work that's being done here and the benefits here. But I think somehow you have to galvanise the rest of your authorities, and maybe we have too, within the Local Government Association, so that we're all singing from the same hymn sheet, otherwise it becomes very easy to get rid of it. And it seems to me that we should have, perhaps in the resolution part of this excellent motion, we should have actually said that we really do want a campaign for a specific and visible and ring-fenced stream of funding, because if it goes into the tender hands of Eric Pickles and DCLG, then it'll get subsumed in the general grant, and that would be disastrous, because we know what happens. So I would support the motion, we support the motion, and we'd like to assist it in any possible way we can.
councillor Faulkner, that remark that wasn't aimed at you before was aimed. councillor Taylor.
Sorry, Lord Mayor. Like councillor Faulkner, I would emphasise that we support this motion. I was interested to look at some of the minutes from the Working Pensions Select Committee from the 18th of March where they discussed this. They did point out that the DWP funded these new schemes at the same level in 2013, 14 and 1415, as would have been provided for those elements of the social fund, which is about £176 million. But as councillor Faulkner has pointed out, the money isn't ring-fenced and local authorities have discretion to distribute it as they see fit, and that may be causing some problems. They also said that it's not yet clear whether the additional funding will be provided within the grant to take account of additional responsibility. The DWP intend to carry out a review of the way local authorities have used the local welfare assistance funding, and if some councils, as councillor Faulkner has said, have not been doing that properly, that is a problem. There are some benefits, I think, of having the money localised, provided that we get it, and it has been pointed out that the face-to-face process enables individuals to be given assistance with the root cause of their financial hardship, rather than just providing emergency financial support. And the Children's Society have agreed that this wider support was a positive aspect of the new system. And it's highlighted that some local authorities are using the new system to join up services and bring together different sources of support in order to address the underlying causes of people having to receive crisis loans, as well as the current emergencies. The committee went on to say something that I think we could all agree with, it said, we believe that it's essential that the government ensures that sufficient funding is available to local authorities to cover the costs of providing the local areas welfare support schemes, which have replaced elements of the discretionary social fund. And we recommend that this is done in one of two ways, either DWP should continue to transfer funding to local authorities beyond April 2015, until it has a clear picture of the level of demand, or the local government settlement administered by the department or the DCLG should be increased by the full amount that would have been allocated for those elements of the discretionary social fund. I'd like to make it clear that Liberal Democrats believe that no household in 21st century Britain should be dependent on charitable support systems for basic necessities of life, and it is clear that current measures offer inadequate protection to some families in deepest need. We have called for ring-fencing of the money made available for the local welfare provision support grant to provide short-term support for people with financial difficulties, and we've suggested that there also could be a new grant system accessible to food banks to support emergency relief to families suffering from food poverty. Perhaps most important, as councillor Forbes has mentioned earlier, we need to expedite the proposals to develop a living wage to make some of this funding unnecessary, but we do support the motion.
councillor Schofield.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I really think this is a very important motion, it's absolutely essential that we, this chamber challenges the government's proposal to stop emergency welfare funding in 2015. It is a shocking backward step, and I just want to use one area to make the point. As a young community worker, I had the appalling experience etched on my soul forever, supporting a young pregnant homeless girl who unexpectedly had an early birth in the most insanitary and awful conditions. The children's officer responsible for her and I got her to hospital, but the baby was dead. The hospital, and I use this word very strongly, the hospital was prepared to dispose of the body. body because the girl had no money. But like every distraught mother in such a situation, she wanted her daughter buried. Now, we were able to use section one of the Children's Act to get an emergency payment for that burial. Despite our best efforts, it was still seen as a poor cause funeral. Flimsy coffin, name scrawled on it, tiny little white box, none of the things that the rest of us take as important at a funeral. Flowers, graveside grieving, the vicar if we choose it, because it had to be as cheap as possible. It was the cruelest expression of destitution, isolation and loneliness imaginable. I never wanted or expected to see people in such a heartrending situation again, but here we go. According to the LGA, there's been a year-on-year rise in the number of such funerals in recent years. Now euphemistically called public health funerals, three thousand in two thousand and eleven were paid for. Campaigners about this have noted the fear of death for so many people in distressing situations, and they have called on the government to face up to their responsibilities to support those in need who have to want a decent burial for their families, their loved ones, et cetera. And I just do have a direct and moral question for those on the opposite side, given that Steve Webb is the Minister of Responsibility for the Social Fund, and he is a Liberal Democrat. I just need to ask, by what inhuman calculus has the coalition government, using cold bureaucratic language of savings to reduce a budget deficit, decided it has no responsibility nationally for people who are vulnerable in distress? Using stigmatising labels to justify their decisions, shirkers, thriftless, et cetera? These are familiar to all of us who have knowledge of the Poor Law and its cruelties to people and for destitute. That would include Steve Webb. He was actually a professor of social policy, and he should really be at the forefront of this campaign. And I really was so glad to hear the support for the motion, but I do have a question also locally for the councillors opposite. It's how are you justifying the reasons given for this government decision to your constituents? And I just think we need to remind ourselves again, we are using this to save, to make savings, to reduce the budget deficit. This is people's lives, and we cannot, we cannot go on like this with a cruel and wicked government that is doing such thing to people, ordinary people, but particularly people in distress. Thank you.
You just got in there, mind.
I think every speaker has spoken very eloquently about this issue. I don't wish to make this explicitly party political, but quite frankly, some of these benefit changes which are going to have adverse impacts on thousands of the most vulnerable citizens both in this city and elsewhere, even Mrs Thatcher throughout the nineteen eighties would never have attempted some of the changes that this coalition government have brought about, and I think that tells a very great story. Thank you.
councillor McCarthy, reserve the right.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor, and I'm really pleased this will be a shared commitment to support the issue. I'd like to pick up on a couple of issues that members of the opposition have raised. councillor Faulkner talked with passion really about what other local authorities are not doing, I suppose, but I guess we are only here to answer for what we do in Newcastle, and as far as I'm concerned, we're doing absolutely everything we can across the whole of the facilities and the officers across the authority, indeed with all of the partners that we worked with across the city, to try and do as much as we can to ensure that the most vulnerable don't suffer. We've heard Anne talk about a really sad story in the past, and, you know, yeah, it was in the past, but those kinds of situations are happening today. And if we look specifically at discretionary housing payment, councillor Taylor welcomed the report of the Working Pension Select Committee that's been launched today, and I have had a chance to look at that. Indeed, we made significant contributions to that work of that select committee. But we have done what we can, we have bid for every penny we can get, we have used it, we have taken advantage of the fact that that was devolved to us, because actually in the local authority, we know how to get hold of those families and support them. We know where they're likely to be, that the proactive work that we've done around providing food for children who during school turns get free school meals, to actually proactively give those families food over the holiday period when some of those children might have gone hungry, I think is a real credit to the work of the officer teams here. Jane talked, you know, in detail about what the fund is given to us for, I think it's very, very clear. For those people who lose everything, you know, Jed earlier talked about his professional life as a firefighter, if your house burns down, you've got nothing, you've got nowhere to go, and it's this funding that helps people. But it's also about, you know, the government talk about making work pay, and of course, you know, as colleagues have said, in terms of austerity, the impact of universal credit and the welfare reforms is going to be massive, and not just because on their own they're wrong, but because, you know, putting on things like the council tax reduction scheme onto the lowest page of the lowest, you know, the most vulnerable people, I think, across the city is just so totally disgraceful. This money does help in terms, Lord Mayor, of travel to work, so it is about helping people to do the best that they can. Our work on having one view of debt, you know, all of these things that we're doing contribute to trying to do our best. And on this side of the council chamber, we're not shameless hypocrites, you know, we have opposed the bedroom tax right from the start, I see the chair resident of the Lib Dems who's now saying they're changing their mind on that. I think we've always been in opposition to that, because, you know, the fourteen or twenty five pounds we are taking away from some of those people is what's helping to keep those people, you know, afloat. It's appalling that we're having to do that. I think, Lord Mayor, let's send a clear collective message to the government through the Local Government Association as well. Let's share the work that we've done, share our learning and help authorities that councillor Faulkner talked about. Let's tell them how we've managed to use that money and spend that resource and our discretionary housing payment, which of course we bid for an additional eight hundred and sixty thousand pounds, which we had six weeks to spend it in, and we've done it, I'm really proud of that. And let's try and do as much as we can, even more if possible, to support the most vulnerable in our communities. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
I now call on councillor Struthers to reply.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Very briefly, I'd just like to thank all the contributions from members in support of this motion, and to thank the opposition too for their support, and I don't disagree with the points that have been made by councillor Faulkner and councillor Taylor. But as councillor McCarthy said, we have used this scheme very well indeed, we have a lot to be proud of, but we have a high level of need in this city, and if one point three four million pounds is removed from us, then we're going to find ourselves in real difficulty and people are really going to suffer. So let's put our weight behind this motion, let's garnish a garden of support for it, and let's make our voice heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Now ask council to vote on the motion.
Thank you very much. Have a nice evening, nice early morning.